We've got a guy who swallows swords and juggles, you know, fire and it's really crazy. And we've got dancers. And anyway, it's a great way to start off Easter Sunday. We're feeding thousands on the beach afterwards. So if you're not doing nothing, come on out. 7:30, a great time. Thank you all so much. Now, the thing that really counts, could we all bow our heads, please, as we chat with the Lord for just a moment? Father, thank you so much that we can all stand in your presence. I thank you for the encouragement which comes when we walk in here and we see that sign on the wall behind the council people. We thank you for, Lord, the fact that in you we trust here in Oceanside. We thank you so much for our city. We thank you for your care for us. Yes, this is the day you've made. Thank you for the oxygen in our lungs and our hearts that beat. And now tonight, for all that's going to transpire, we pray, Lord, for every council member. Bless each one of these individuals. We thank you for them. And, Lord, this city's way too big for just them. They need you. So please give them your wisdom tonight, the wisdom of Solomon. Give them, Lord, the hearts of David. And, Lord, if possible, give them, in each of us, the humility of your Son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for allowing us to come. Bless our moments and our minutes. And we're going to thank you in advance. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief McCoy to join us for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up Andy Morabi and Janet Pippens, please. So for those of you that are aware, drones are becoming, or, yeah, drones are becoming a big issue for law enforcement and fire service nowadays. We have a lot of folks that have these as, I wouldn't say toys, but, but as hobbies that they fly around. And that's great. And, and they are, it's a great hobby. However, there are times when the folks that use this as a hobby interfere with our business. And more importantly, a couple of years ago, our city was threatened with fire. And in order for us to fight those fires, the fire department uses aerial assets to fight those fires. Unfortunately, the, those folks that have drones as hobbies, they like flying over the fires so they can see what's going on. And unfortunately, when they do that, they, the fire department has to ground all of the aircraft because it's too dangerous for them to fly. So it causes a lot of safety issues for our community. And that did happen here a couple of years ago. And we were trying to come up with a way of how do we deal with that issue? Several law enforcement agencies were invited to a demonstration by IXI Technology. This company developed what they call a drone killer. But what it is, it's an intervention device that when there is a drone that is flying illegally, it will allow the law enforcement agency to intercept that drone and remove it from the sky. It does not damage it. It simply allows us to take over the electronics of that drone. And that drone can then be grounded and not cause any interference with whatever the safety issue is going on at the time. So with that, we also found that Andy Morabi is the brother of one of our police officers. And from that, IXI Technology has decided to donate this drone killer to the Oceanside Police Department. And we very much thank him for that. I'm going to hand the microphone over to[288.13][288.13](Applause) I'm going to hand the microphone over to Andy and let him talk a little bit about his product.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for inviting us to the meeting. On behalf of the CEO, Michael Carter, it's our pleasure to donate this drone killer, drone intervention device. Drone intervention device doesn't work well with marketing. But anyway, it's our pleasure to present this to you. We have a nice carrying case over there. And this being a software-defined radio, as these drones change their characteristics, will continue to keep you, your department, updated with the latest technology. Do will, we'll just do a real quick demonstration. We won't fly the drone. I will just show a connection. If you want to hold the screen up there so you can see the video. If you look on the iPad over there, you can see that we have a live connection. Chief, if you want to turn it on, pull the trigger. There you go. The connection's broke. If this drone was flying, they would do one of the three things. Like you said, it doesn't hurt the drone. It would return to base. So it'll hover over the operator. So you, as law enforcement first responders, can say, I need to have a conversation. Need to fly your drone in another location. So it'll either return to base.
Can you put on my filter? It's hard to hear.
The drone will return to base when the connection is broken, or it'll hover in place, or it'll just do a soft landing. So like you said, this does not hurt the drone at all. So it's just be using protective measures. But that's all I have. So thank you, guys, for inviting us.[391.62][391.62](Applause)
So I am very happy to say that we are the first law enforcement agency in San Diego County to have such a device. So again, it's a very useful, useful tool for us. And we're very grateful as a police department and as a city for this wonderful donation from, from your company. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to invite Inez Williams and Linda Walsh up for proclamation for Fair Housing Month. So I'll present you with the proclamation and ask you to say just a few words about Fair Housing Month.
Well, thank you, Mayor Weiss. Hello, everyone. My name is Inez Williams, known as Chairperson for the City of Oceanside Housing Commission. And this, on April the 11th, on April the 11th, it marks the 50th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 in combination with the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And basically, what fair housing is, is ensure that everyone has equal access to housing regardless of your race, your color, your creed, ethnicity, your sexual orientation, your religion. The Federal Fair Housing Act ensures that that is, that that is available to you. Also, on April 6, a fair housing conference will be held. If you're interested in going, it's pretty much marking the 50th anniversary. You can go to register for that at housingSanDiego.org. Mayor Weiss.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the proclamation and for the fair housing that we do through the City of Oceanside. Our staff puts in so much work on this. And I really appreciate all their help in making sure that everyone is housed appropriately in the city. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.[534.04][534.04](Applause)
Next, we have the closed session report.
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss Item 1 on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving the Oceanside Police Management Association, as well as the Oceanside Firefighter Association and the management employees of the City of Oceanside. There's no action to report on the Brown Act under Item 1. The Council also met on Item 2 to discuss conference with real property negotiator. The property at issue are the vacant parcels of land in the San Luis Rey River outside of the City of Oceanside. The APN numbers are listed on Page 2 of the agenda. The negotiating parties are the City of Oceanside and the County of San Diego. And under negotiations are the price and terms for the use of the real property. That item was discussed, but there's no reportable action under the Brown Act at this time.
Next, we have the consent calendar, Items 4 through 14.
Move approval?
No public.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Item number 15 is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Oceanside City Code by the modification of Section 29A.37, requiring all commercial service providers who access docks to obtain a permit from the Small Craft Harbor District.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Ted Shifon, Harbor Division Manager. I am introducing an amendment to an ordinance, Chapter 29, requiring all commercial service providers to obtain a permit from the harbor. The key word there is "all commercial service providers." As a little background, currently, there's a little limitation to the existing ordinance where we limit that strictly to those who pose a pollution risk to the harbor. So therefore, other service providers that do other work, such as upholstery or electrical work, have not been required to obtain a permit. Basically, with this amended ordinance, we will require all service providers to obtain a permit and obtain the proper insurance requirement, which will reduce the potential of loss due to a claim to the harbor. Very little fiscal impact. We only have really a few service providers that are outside of the current ordinance right now. But we would like to make certain that all service providers at the harbor are meeting this obligation to obtain that insurance policy. That's it. I can answer any questions for you.
We have one speaker on this item, Jim Jenkins.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, a couple of things I just wanted to bring up in regards to this. I'm sorry, once again, Jim Jenkins, 1429 Cai Marbella. I was the previous chairman for the Harbor and Beaches Advisory, served on it for eight years. So I've been actively involved when that first got situated. One of the things I still feel is kind of unfair is that by requiring the vendors to have an Oceanside business license, we limit the ability to bring other vendors up into this area to perform work. And what I mean by that is we have great vendors, Valley Detroit, representatives of Volvo, Cummins, a lot of these different engine companies. But they're already established businesses with business license in San Diego County. And they say it's not worth it to them to come all the way up here and establish a business license, pay the additional fees, when they're already established business of the City of San Diego County. And what it does, it limits the boat owners to have these other professional crafts and providers that come up here. And so when it comes down to only having a handful of vendors that are here in Oceanside, it becomes kind of a pricing gouging work because now you're, you're held kind of subject to only two or three local vendors versus a lot of the newer boats now have the higher technology of engines, Volvos, Cummins, Detroit's. And you need specific professional vendors to work on those. A lot of the people that are in the harbor don't have that technology. But a lot of these other vendors, I've talked to them, said, it's not worth it, worth it for us to go up to Oceanside, get a license and everything else when we're already licensed in San Diego County. So my question would be is why, if they're a licensed vendor in San Diego County, and we're part of San Diego County, could they not use that license to come up, still charge them the permit fee, get documented, everything else, but open it up to where some of these high-quality vendors can come in and service, you know, our, our boats in the harbor and help out? So just a thought. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Would you like to respond to that?
My understanding is this amended ordinance doesn't really deal with that specific issue. The city has a requirement for a business license to operate in the city. And so I would still suggest we continue in that vein.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I do see that the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee voted unanimously to approve this. And it is my understanding that if you are outside business, you can get a license, which is not, it's not excessive in, in terms of a burden. So, and they already have insurance. So they just have to show proof of the insurance. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
Councilmember Kern?
I'll second that. I just want to know about some of the process. So where do they apply for the permit? Is it to your office or at the city offices?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Kern, they apply at the harbor office right now. We have a process and an application that they fill out.
Okay. And then I guess the follow-up is, how do you enforce this?
We enforce ensuring that everyone
Somebody working on a boat, does, does it, Harbor Police go talk to them? Or Harbor Maintenance Worker go talk to them? Or your office go talk to them and ask them? How's that work?
Absolutely. If we identify someone on the harbor who's doing service and they don't have a permit, we'll address it with them directly. Now, they shouldn't be able to access the docks if they don't have a service provider permit.
Usually, the boat owner gives them access, though. I mean, lets them in the gates and then get the work done. So
Correct.
I apologize. I meant to say introduce the ordinance.
I'm sorry, what?
I said move approval.
Whatever you, I'll second whatever she wants to say.
Okay.[985.84][985.84](Laughter)
All right. It's semantics, but the idea, I just, yeah, I, I don't think it's a very difficult process to get one. So, and to address Mr. Jenkins' issue, if they're here quite often, as it becomes more and more technical and there are more jobs under the harbor, I think those businesses will probably get a license to work there. Thank you.
Mr. Muller?
Yeah, and I think it actually makes it easier. Once you comply, you then have your own access to the gates. So it would actually help the boat owners to make those arrangements. They don't have to be there to, to, for them to be able to access the, the gates. Thank you.
Okay. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 29A of the Oceanside City Code to require all commercial service providers to obtain a permit from the Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to Item 21.
Item 21 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, repealing Article 18 of the 1986 zoning ordinance, amending Articles 27 and 35 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, and establishing the amended articles as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
22?
Item 22 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, repealing Articles 39 and 39A of the 1986 zoning ordinance, amending Articles 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 30, 39A, and 41C, and adding Article 39A/B to the comprehensive zoning ordinance, and establishing the amended text of Articles 12, 15, 9, I'm sorry, 12, 15, 39A, B, and C, and 41C as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
23?
Item 23 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 37 of the Oceanside City Code by the repeal of Section 37.8 relating to cross-connection control and backflow prevention and the addition of Article 9.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
There are no mayor or council member items, but are there any general council member comments?
Not at this time.
I, I'd like to close the meeting tonight in honor of Herman Walker.
Seeing no others, how many speakers are on Item 20?
Two, uh, three. Okay. At this time, we'll have off-agenda comments. First, we have Travis Stone.
I'm Travis Stone, 4321 Avenue de Soladán. And I want to speak on behalf of homeless shelters because of, I was doing some research not that long ago. And I figured out that there's not that many in California. I found a lot in San Diego, but like none in Oceanside. And so I want to have, that's where we can have shelters for the homeless people, to where they can go spend the night, get food, get water, do what they need to do, get, regroup themselves to where they will be able to, like, get back on track and hopefully go out and find a job and try and get their life back in order to help themselves.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Janay Alms.
Am I able to hand them anything?
Yeah.
Hi, I appreciate being here tonight. My name's Janay Alms. I live at 5558 Nanday Court in Oceanside. I've been here about 10 years. Came as a tennis player from Orange County and injured my shoulder and was very sad about that. And in the interim, I found pickleball. And I know some of you have heard of pickleball before. And I'm not here to discuss about the courts, but want to thank you first for having us. We went to the open house you had last night. It was very encouraging to see that we had pickleball listed there. Our sport has grown dramatically. And we started off at Melba Bishop, but we have expanded to the point that we are overflowing. And finding out, as we've been working with people in the city, Eileen Turk and a few other people there, we found out that we're actually not communicating with the correct people. And they recommended that we come to the City Council. So tonight, I'm just here to, to offer an interim solution. I, instead of bringing just a problem, I'm offering a solution. Then in speaking last night to a tennis player who was very adamant that I shall not convert him to pickleball because he still could run very well, he, after we spoke, he said, I can get behind that. So what we're asking is, and as you can see on the paper I gave you, the first two are Melba Bishop. And that is on just a normal weekday. You can see how many people are playing there. We can have at least 32 people playing at one time on what would normally be eight people at a tennis court because we can put that many on there. Plus, we have about, we can get up to 60 people in a day there participating, but we're all waiting. And so we're overflowing. So what we're asking, until we can get a more permanent solution and work with the city on that, we're asking that we take two courts over at Luceno Park and also two of the courts at Rancho del Oro and make them multi-use courts by just painting the lines. A lot of the cities are doing that because it doesn't interfere with tennis. We're not asking to resurface anything. We're not moving the, the nets. Tennis players can be there. And then what we do is we bring our portable nets. When we're finished playing, we just roll up our little portable nets and we leave. This way, we're not interfering. We're not taking any courts away. This will give us all a little breathing room until we're able to get our own courts. And I want to give you a personal feeling about pickleball. It's not like any other sport. I have a woman that was a volleyball player in the Olympics. She's over 70. She thought her life was done with athletics. And then she found pickleball. She's beaming. She's in our senior games. I have on there, I've run the senior games here. So I'm coming to find out, can we get something approved to get lines? We will take care of the cost for it. All we would have to do is get an approval to do it. Or who do I speak with to get on this next step?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, our neighborhood services director's in the audience, and she can help you when you're done with your comments. Marjorie Pierce.
Okay. So do I have kind of a, yes? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Wait, how do I turn on the doc camera?
Oh, I'll turn it off for you.
Zoom in. How do we do that? There we go. Whatever. Okay, hi. Councilmembers, good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Oceanside, Fire Mountain, and on Ivy Road. I come to you tonight with, to share two things that I've heard and read. And my concern is that decisions that are made here in this council chambers, one, make it more possible for those who work here to actually live here. In other words, protecting and conserving genuinely affordable homes. Middle-income, what John saw me with this article from the Coast News is that we have a whole lot of high-end housing, more than we need in the region. And what we need is to protect housing and housing possibilities for those who work in Oceanside to make it actually possible for them to live in Oceanside. The second thing I bring to you is that we may be hindering our youth regarding earning a good living. In other words, their upward mobility. Okay, now we need to back it out. So this, the title of this is, Where You Grow Up May Affect How Well You Climb the Income Ladder. This has been on PBS. It has to do with the California Dream Project. And why is it that upward mobility is higher in some California cities than others? I have punched this together. One is, some places, places that are less residentially segregated, where the rich and the poor live together in close proximity, tend to have higher levels of upward mobility. The second one is where places with less, they have more income equality rather than less inequality. So there's a larger middle class. And we have more favorable, third is more stable family structures. Fourth is social capital. In other words, who in your community will step up and help you when you need some help? We had a lot of that in the 50s. And the third is better schools, elementary through high school. And what I'm saying here is that we can make decisions in this body that give our students a higher, a better ability to have higher social mobility by, for one thing, instead of accepting in-lu fees and clumping poor people together, we can actually build true integrate, integrative, not integrative, inclusive, inclusionary housing, true inclusionary housing. So this is a lot of stuff. It's very detailed. But I wanted to bring this to your attention. I hope that you'll be watching the California Dream Project on PBS. It's fascinating. Thank you and good evening. Thank you, and good evening.
Our next speaker is Jim Jenkins.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, once again, Jim Jenkins, Rancho Del Oro. Concern I have is about appointment issues are my concerns. I know I asked approximately three council meetings back prior regarding why Deputy Mayor Chuck Lowery is still in this position. He's been there for four years, now appointed since 2014. And I just didn't understand why that's still happening after four years. I brought up and asked about Oceanside City Code 2.1.65, Paragraph B, which stated that in December of each year, that position's supposed to be looked at and reappointed by the mayor. Understandable, the mayor was out last year. But in our last council meeting, Mayor Weiss had made appointments to all the different committees. So the question is, why was that deputy mayor position not looked at and also reappointed as well? Four years doesn't give the other council members an opportunity to show what they're about and what they do. Back in 2014, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Kern, Mr. Filler, you guys were a very big proponent of the rotational process of council members in the position of deputy mayor. Also, I believe there was a lot of concern about a person whose election year it is should not be the deputy mayor as well. So don't understand why this is still happening. Seems to be some weird positions going on regarding the seats that are being filled on committees. And it seems like there might be some conflicts of interest involving some of these as well regarding spouses, friends. And as of late, Planning Commission, we had a person removed who is a PhD in urban development, a professor, was removed, not sure why, but replaced with, I believe, deputy mayor's girlfriend. Seems like some conflicts of interest, and it needs to be looked at.
Point of order. Let's stick with the facts. If you know the facts, please state the facts.
Okay.
If you wish to state something else, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to look at facts.
Exactly. And the fact is...
So please use facts if you want to make accusations. That's where they start. They start with facts.
I will provide you with information of what I've got.
So please use facts. You don't have to explain to me why you've been making things up. That's okay.
I'm not making nothing up.
Yes, you are making things up.
It's a conflict of interest.
So please, it's not a conflict of interest. It's just a matter of stating the truth.
Oh, okay.
That's all there is to it.
I can bring a number of people in.
Thank you very much.
Sure, absolutely. Well, even, anyway, it's time to eliminate the good old boy or girl syndrome and start thinking about the needs of the city and not the needs of the staff. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Then we will adjourn until 6 o'clock.